So you wouldn't require a permit to decommission. I just think we need to clarify what that permit is, or change the language.
What's the average cost to install?
Because paragraph C two talks about special use permit.
The first one.
Yeah, that means special use permit, but you're not going to issue the permit until they've handed you over the security. Because once they have the permit, they're free to go start building, so you don't want them to do that until the security's in hand. Or you could say at least before a billing permit is issued.
Need the security.
So that third line, financial security in effect before the special use permit is approved?
That's how I read it.
I think a billing permit would make more sense only because you put the applicant in a difficult situation by requiring that they get security before they even know that they're going to have a permit. Otherwise, they could spend a lot of money on security or a cash deposit, and then you say, no, you're not getting the permit.
They would have to put it up on the ticket. Building at that time.
Or, like I said, you could change that to before any building permit is issued for any construction, because then, you know, the thing you're most concerned about is the power going up, so then they'd have to have that security in place before any building permit is issued, allow that construction.
And the township controls all of those building permits? It doesn't involve the county at all?
Well, do you contract the county for your building?
The county does.
Because we wouldn't want the county issuing something. Can we say the county can't issue it?
I think Dave doesn't, if I'm not mistaken, Dave handles billing permits, but he goes to the county, correct?
Correct, yep. He gotta go through, he issues, yeah, he has, you have to have a permit through the county.
So which comes first, a permit from Dave or a permit from the county?
He gives, he gives you a permit, then you have to go through the county.
Okay, so it would be our township billing permit that he, that they would need first? So they wouldn't be given that from Dave until the security was in place, right? Is how that would be?
And is that possible to change others?
I don't think so. I think that's our building ordinance, isn't it? That you get a township permit before you can go to the county to build anything.
Yeah, because Dave's got to make sure the zoning, you know, subs right first.
Well, here's, okay, here's another option, maybe sensitive, maybe some uncertainty about that process. You could say, uh, the financial security must be in effect before this special use permit is effective. So ultimately, understand what, what's going to happen is we're probably going to have to work with either Paul, myself, or both of you, if and when a project comes in and you ultimately approve it. We'll be drafting a resolution that's probably about forty pages long for you that has all the terms and conditions of approval, one of which will say, this permit is not effective until such time as the financial security has been posted. And so perhaps that's the easiest way to do that, because the special use permit is totally within your jurisdiction to decide if and when it's entered. So if we say it should be in effect before the special use permit is effective.
And that may not even be necessary, because as I read paragraph two, it says such financial guarantees shall be deposited or filed with the township clerk after a special use has been approved, but before construction operations begin on the WEX project. That pretty much says what we're saying right here, or maybe we just take out the wording from the prior paragraph. Well, but that seems to be in the wrong place, because we're talking about removal, and paragraph two is construction and project.
Well, it's that we want the proof that they will financially cover the removal before they even start. Isn't that the goal of all of this verging right here?
I think this is an instance where, you know, we're trying to do a drafting on the spot. I think we all know what we want to do here, is we don't want them building anything until the financial security is approved and in place. And at least then Paul needs to sit down with the applicant to make sure it says that, and reconcile these provisions, and I think we've got the direction we need.
So basically, this has just got to be cleaned up, because, you know, this is kind of putting the, the words. Paul, you've cleaned that all up there.
I'm working on it. And then again, in paragraph two, there are several references to applicant, owner, applicant, and owner. So, and then again, in paragraph three, so I'm, I'm not comfortable with the word applicant in those cases.
What we might want to do, and this is, this is just a thought, Paul, I can talk about it, but we might want another definition in the ordinance's responsible party, and define that to include whatever entity, whether it be the applicant, the owner, or the operator, who has the legal authority to take such steps as required under the ordinance at the time that obligation arises. And then just use the term responsible party every place where that occurs, except for at the application stage, where you're obviously, it's the applicant at that point.
But can they then point fingers, like you said? It's not, not me, it's him?
Well, ultimately, I mean, somebody's going to have responsibility, and, you know, the township can figure out who that is.
Does it complicate you to sign on private land?
Well, necessarily, the applicant, if it's a wind company, is going to have to submit with its application proof of the landlord's consent to the applicant, an agreement to be bound by all the terms and conditions of the permit. And that's typical in any situation, you know, a lot of times you have developers come in and seek rezoning, and you don't allow them to do that unless they've got proof of the landlord's consent to the, the application. You would do the same here, and require all the participating landowners to join in the application, and therefore, they're going to be bound, and so did to whatever requirements of the ordinance that, you know, might require access to the property and want that to complete.
Because it says, you know, it says the payment of all attorney fees and costs incurred by the township in the event that the structure is not voluntarily removed, you know, it's on, it's on private land, so ultimately, I just don't want to see the township be hung with any of this. So ultimately, it's on private land, I just don't know why we're, we're not tying in the, the landlord too.
Well, what I'm saying is, we will, you know, that's part of the application process. You could not, it would not be profitable for the township to approve a special land use permit for wind turbine on a property that the, the property owner has not joined in and consented to that application.
Well, I think Rick's talking more about having a lien against the property for decommissioning, when it all comes down to it.
There's very limited circumstances in this, where you can actually put a lien on somebody's property for these type of obligations, and I would suggest you do not do that. It's, you're wading into probably illegal waters that you do that. There's a number of statutes that specifically authorize it being done, which implicates the idea that unless there's statutory authority, you can't do it.
So just, for example, there was a, a company that actually put a lien against property because, I don't know if it was Apex or another wind company, did not pay them for their work done. So they started putting liens on the landowner's property.
Yeah, that's probably a construction lien, which is a subject covered in, authorized and subject to the Construction Lien Act, where if contractors on job give appropriate notices and record them on the project, and don't pay their subcontractors, the, the person who are licensed doing work on that project can put a lien on the property.
And then they get like ten cents on the dollar. I knew of a situation like that.
And that's probably just a practical outcome, rather than, you know, they could potentially collect a full amount for the litigation, maybe, maybe I'll do that, but.
So if you're not in the construction law, you go with the construction law?
No, I mean, the, the situation you're talking about is if Apex hires ABC Construction Company to put together the storage shed on the property, then Apex doesn't pay them, perhaps ABC Construction Company could put a construction lien on the property. But that's not the same thing as the township saying, you didn't take down your tower, so now we're going to lien your property for the cost of removing it. There's not any sort of statute that authorizes that. I mean, what, what would happen in that situation, worst case scenario? There's a breach, decommissioning doesn't occur, the township calls on the performance bond to get the money, and the landowner or someone won't let you on the property to do it. Well, then you've got to go to district court to get a, a warrant of sorts for entrance to the property, which you'll get, because they're required to do that to comply with the ordinance, and so a court's going to allow township bond for that purpose.
It's still on page thirty-four.
We should be up there. We beat this upper part up a couple times now.
I've got a couple in complaint resolution. Paragraph, well, paragraph, the opening paragraph refers to the township board establishing the process, but then in paragraph A, it references the planning commission shall select complaint resolution, excuse me, process. But then all the other references and subsequent paragraphs are back to the township board. So I'm thinking that it may be preferable to change planning commission, township board, to be consistent, since they're the ones that seem to be responsible for handling the complaint process. Also, in paragraph A, the last sentence there, upon receiving a complaint, the township shall forward said complaint to the WEX owner. Administratively, that kind of puts the burden on the township. And I think it may be preferable to, this says there will be a form developed by the township. On the form indicate that the complaint has to be sent to the township and the WEX owner, so that you, you don't have to be the middleman and pass it on to the WEX owner. So I, it's just an administrative kind of thing, but it takes the burden off your shoulders. And then under paragraph C, notice of hearing shall be via certified mail. I'd suggest adding some timing and recipient requirements. Okay, we're, we're saying a notice of hearing shall be sent out. Who does it go to? Is it everybody within three hundred feet? Is it the complainant? You know, who gets it, and how much advance notice do they get prior to the hearing?
I think probably with everyone within one mile of the turbine that's being complained. Is that too much?
That seems to be a reach. In zoning, it's three hundred feet. You could also require that a notice be published in the paper, the township website, or something like that, so there's broader notification.
Well, if it's called a public hearing, should that follow the same requirements as our other public hearings?
I think that makes sense. You don't have to, but I think that gives you good parameters to follow.
So basically, it'd be the same parameters as a regular public hearing? That'd be good, that'd be good.
People within three hundred feet, and you notice it at least fifteen meters before the hearing in the paper.
And where we, our reference was put in of notice of hearing shall be via certified mail to, it doesn't say to whom, would that be to?
Anyone within three hundred feet is what, round and?
Three hundred feet of the turbine, of the complaint, the property line?
In zoning, you would measure three hundred feet from the boundary of the property line on which the turbine is located.
So it'd be all the property properties.
Yeah, all the non-participating properties within three hundred feet of the boundary of participating property.
And we have to research like?
Yeah, I think that's overkill, if they certify, even the zoning act just requires a regular mail for those notices, and that's really an unnecessary expense. But we just incorporate the same requirements that are in the zoning act, ought to be sufficient.
I think it should say, you, you said non-participating within three hundred feet, I, I would say all.
Yeah, I, sorry, I, I didn't mean to limit it that way, so assuming that the ground and personal are non-participating. I mean, you got two participating persons next to each other, and they're in the three hundred feet, yeah, they'd be entitled to notice.
Shouldn't be a timeline on item B? Well, it's kind of in different areas. I mean, it says if it's not operating for so long, it has to be.
But that's under number ten, B? Is that, is that what you're talking about now?
Yeah. I guess it's decommissioning, we're talking about decommissioning.
Are we talking about the, we're under?
What?
Complaint resolution.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
These aren't complaints, they're not necessarily decommissioned.
Right. Didn't we already go over some of that?
Well, we did, we did as far as like compliance with the sound and compliance with the different things that they have to, we changed it from mitigate to they have to comply within thirty days.
And this is nuisance compliance? Number nine is how you complain, and how the process is done to resolve it. Number ten is, if you're told you're out of compliance, this is what you have to do.
Well, item D two has got the applicant in there, and you got to clean that up. It should be, shouldn't be the applicant, it should be the owner again, right?
You're going to use that term spot on target and define that.
Yep.
Under B, where it says investigation of complaints, this says that the township would utilize escrow funds to hire appropriate experts. What if the complaint is just a frivolous nuisance complaint? Should the applicant, should the owner be penalized to, to pay for investigating something like that? I mean, there, there no doubt can't be legitimate complaints, I'm not suggesting that. But I've seen situations in other communities where there's a neighbor that just likes to call the, the city or the township and complain, and it just takes people's time, there's never anything to the complaint. We're, we're saying the applicant has to pay for all of that.
Yeah, it can complain three, four times, I guess, but how do you decide what is frivolous and not?
Well, I think after investigating.
Yeah, but a complaint could be legitimate at the time, say it was too noisy. You'd have to have the same conditions to.
I, I just want to bring that to your attention.
No, I agree with that.
Well, it says to hire the appropriate experts, it doesn't say will hire an expert, so that if someone says, I have a sound complaint, I have a mechanical complaint, an electrical complaint.
Well, then there's like, they don't go get TV reception, there's going to be.
Complaints.
There's going to be a complaint when the truck turns a corner. It's going, it's going to start then, and it's not going to stop.
But I guess my point is there may be complaints about legitimate operation of the use in compliance with all township requirements. Trucks coming to the site, or whatever it might be, and somebody doesn't like the fact that the power company has a truck going down their street now. To me, that's a nuisance complaint.
Yeah, a lot of them, they go through the corners, they make a new road that any straight cross.
Can be honored on that, and put it into some type of word.
So, do they do that by having a domain, to be able to access their stuff into there, or how do they do it?
Are you going to like, try to reword that one, Paul, somehow, B? Or separate to the complaint somehow? Anything else on thirty-four?
I would make one suggestion, having read this, right now, it, it talks about that the board shall set a public hearing. I think the board ought to have the discretion, since there is a prior investigation, to not hold the hearing in, in situations where the township's investigation shows the complaint isn't valid. Otherwise, you have to hold a hearing, even though you hired experts and say, there's nothing to this. There's going to be no point in that case of holding a hearing, so instead of shall, it show, it, they might want to tweak that to give them the discretionary authority to hold a hearing on what are determined to be valid complaints.
What if it is valid complaint at the time? But it isn't being replicated at the point that it's investigated?
Well, by valid, I, I don't mean that, I mean, lacking in any merit, I mean, you're right, there's circumstances where, you know, the top, the, the thing's running one day, and the, the shall flicker is happening, but it's not when they go out there, but I think you, you should have some reasonable basis for believing there's a need for a hearing before binding yourself to, I mean, right now, it shall, every time a complaint comes in, you have to hold a hearing. That's an awful burden to put on the township every time, regardless of the merits of the complaint. And I, and I think you got to assume the township's going to operate in good faith and make, you know, that you're going to want to protect your residents and not just say, no, we're not believing any of these complaints. And you're, you're in control of the process, so it's not like the applicant gets to decide what is and isn't valid.
So it's take out the shall and the what?
Well, it, it requires a little more significant redrafting than that, but the idea is to give, that's to make a discretionary decision about whether you go forward with the complaint based on it being a valid one, or at least something that has reasonable merit.
So basically, basically, that first paragraph needs to be drafted.
Well, it's, it's really C, that's the, the problem, that's the one that says the township board shall set a public hearing.
Is there, is there a way to have a notice of complaint?
To whom?
To the public. And then, like, split that off from a public hearing for hearing of complaints? Like, to make the community aware that someone has a concern?
Yeah, that might stop frivolous complaints that way, too, if somebody, if this does it over and over and over.
I guess I'm not understanding the.
Like, like if you, if, if you had a complaint, and to protect from it just being disregarded, to say, we've received a complaint about this tower, you know? Maybe there's someone else that experienced the same thing, and doesn't know what to do.
You just need to add an extra step in there, is what you're trying to do.
To be able to post it on something, so it's.
To, to be able to say, you know, complaint received on this tower, you know, and maybe it's oil, maybe it's, and someone else says, well, I saw it too, you know, is?
Just you got to remember, all those steps take time to process.
Yeah.
So it could be three months down the road before you actually get to the complaint.
Yeah, I mean, your, your concerns are very understandable, and ensuring that, you know, complaints are taken seriously, but there's a certain level of diminishing returns on the administrative burden you're putting on the township. Publish every complaint that comes in in the newspaper, and that's, you're going to have to develop the, you know, the township department of, of wind complaints that operates full-time, if you put too much into this.
Complaint comes in, you stick it in.
Thirty-four, then, B, you're going to redraft that?
Yep.
Okay, so then thirty-four is done?
Uh, well, under compliance, paragraph A, the last sentence there says, non-compliance with ordinance requirements shall result in denial or revocation of the permit, meaning the special use permit. That's a, I would suggest may result in revocation of the permit. Because again, some complaints may be legitimate, but may be pretty minor and easily corrected. Things that might be a one-time situation where they exceeded the flicker limits, or something like that, that doesn't warrant revoking their special use permit. So I think just inserting the word may instead of shall, still gives you the option of doing it under appropriate circumstances, but that's. under appropriate circumstances, but doesn't require that you do it in all cases.
Would you point out what number and letter that was?
Yeah, I'm not finding it.
Under ten eight.
Ten eight.
Under compliance, paragraph A.
Yeah, I would suggest not only may, but get out of, take out the word denial. Because really, what you're talking about, there's reservation of that. Obviously, if they don't comply with the ordinance, you're not gonna issue the permit in the first place. So you don't really need to stick the obvious.
Well, compliance is after, after the fact though. It's kind of late, it's kind of late to be.
Right.
So you're to deny a permit.
Anything else?
Under, same section, under paragraphs B and C, we use the terms nuisance compliance complaint and non-nuance compliance, which I don't think are defined. No, they're not. So they should be. I mean, we need to have an understanding of what the difference is between a nuisance compliance complaint and a non-nuance complaint. To me, non-nuance implies a fairly minor item that may be handled administratively rather than going through the whole township board review and hiring experts and all of that. So I, I think, if we're gonna use the terms, we oughta have some understanding of what's under the.
So you're gonna define that something.
And any guidance you have for me in terms of what you were thinking as to what's a nuisance and what's a non-nuance.
We don't know yet.
Okay. And I'm kind of blushed and you're fighting.
A non-nuance one I could think of is I mentioned, like the oil. You, you can see it, you know it's not right, but it doesn't have to do with sound, shadowing, what somebody's got on your property, you know, by driving, disturbing. Where in, in my mind, that's the first thing I thought of when you said what's a non-nuance. Mechanical, you know, blade.